Mr. Clerk, please call roll.
Griffin.
Here.
Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. Mr. Chair, you have a form.
Thank you so much. Will everyone please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is standing one nation under God in the business of liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please dispense with the jour— Mr. Clerk, please dispense with the journal.
By Councilmember Sly that the reading of the minutes of the last meeting, the dispensary and the journal approved, seconded by Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. We'll now have public comment. The first person that we have up is Dr. Philip Gardner. And Dr. Philip Gardner is from Hercules, California. His topic that he wants to talk about is menthol as the main killer of black folks. He is not representing anyone. He is not being paid by anyone. And I do want to say, Mr. Gardner is a national spokesperson and expert on anti-menthol cigarettes across the country. Mr. Gardner?
Thank you very much for having me. And thank you. I met some of you council members this afternoon. In short, I'm Dr. Philip Gardner, one of the co-chairs of the African American Tobacco Control Leadership Council. And we're strongly encouraging the city of Cleveland to remove menthol cigarettes and all flavored tobacco products from the shelves. Look, the original sin was in 2009 when the FDA removed 13 flavors from cigarettes, from tobacco products, and the only one they left on were menthol cigarettes. We know that the problem with that is that for over 60 years, the tobacco industry has targeted African American communities with these products. There's more advertisements, there's more promotions, there's—in fact, we have data that shows that menthol cigarettes are cheaper in those communities. This is a special flavor. It's not only tasty, it's an anesthetic that allows for deeper inhalation. The deeper that you take in things, the more addicted you become, the more addicted you become, the harder these products are to quit. Let's be clear that the basis that the councils should take this up—I'm encouraging you to follow the lead of your sister city of Columbus, which we worked with tirelessly over the last year to get menthol restrictions passed. Don't believe the hype that you're going to hear as we move forward with this, that this is a black cigarette and that if you take it away, will be discriminatory. I'm a public health doctor, I'm not discriminatory. It's the tobacco industry that is discriminatory. That there'll be an illicit market. There've been 90 cities around the country that have taken this up. No illicit market has been found. And that—that this somehow will lead to greater arrests of African Americans. This is about stopping the sale of these at the retail level. This is not about individual possession. It's time to act. It's—the time to act is past. In the next months, you're going to see a rollout here in Cleveland. City council trainings, community trainings and educations, and retailer trainings and educations. Lives are at stake. I'm calling on you once again. Let's remove menthol from the marketplace. Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Gardner. And I also had the privilege and honor of meeting and talking with you today. Your points were well received. And council will deliberate as we as we usually do. Thank you. The next person is Turquesa Tenny from Old Brooklyn. And Turquesa Tenny is here to talk about the West Side Market. Turquesa is not representing anyone and is not being paid by anyone. Turquesa, you had the floor. Please acknowledge your time.
Okay, thank you. Service, social justice, dignity of work of a person, importance of human relations, integrity, and competence. These are the competence. These are the seven ethical principles I'm held to as a social worker. I aim to ensure access to needed information, services, and resources of equality, opportunity, and meaningful participation in decision-making by all people, which is why I came here today, to say that it's socially unjust to utilize funding designated to speed up the country's economic and health effects of the COVID-19 pandemic and ongoing recession on elevated repairs of the West Side Market. Meanwhile, per Healthy Northeast Ohio 2022 data, 89 to 99% of residents in 15 zip codes suffer from food insecurities. I don't know if repairing the West Side Market will help us recover from the health effects of COVID-19, but I do know that addressing food insecurities in our most vulnerable—with our—for our most vulnerable residents will. I've lived here for 46 years, and to our mayor's credit, I've watched the city transform at what feels like lightning speed as far as development, investment, to the point where at least I feel like we are a world-class destination. So, thank you, Mr. Bibbs. All accolades due. However, considering that the market sits in the middle of two of the top 10 richest neighborhoods per the 2022 U.S. Census data, is it unreasonable to pursue private funding? The ARPA fund should be utilized to take care of our fellow residents who lack access to basic food. In the words of Albert Einstein, "If I were to remain silent, I'd be guilty of complicity." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Turquesa. Next, we have Essie Williams. And Essie Williams is from Ward 2. Essie would like to talk about doubling of the electric bill from First Energy and NOPAC. And she is not representing anyone and not being paid by anyone. Ms. Essie Williams, you had the floor.
Hello. My name is Essie Williams. I live in Ward 2. Mr. Kevin Bishop is my councilman. And I'm here to voice my concerns about public funds. No public funds should be used to repair or build a new stadium at First Energy. We, the Cleveland residents, are still paying for the last stadium that was built. And we will be—in and we are indebted to that last stadium until 2028. The Browns organization only pays $250,000 a year for rental of the stadium. However, the Cleveland residents pay $762,000 in taxes a year. And that's a deficit of $512,000 that the Cleveland residents are paying right now. for rent than he does for his expenses. And I'm repeating, Cleveland residents are paying all of the upkeep. Now, the residents in Ohio are facing a doubling of the electric bills, and this is by First Energy Corporation. Now, we had a huge price increase in our bills before the Larry Householder incident. So, are we paying to reimburse First Energy for the money that they gave a Larry Householder? And there's been no outcry or pushback from the state legislative body. So, where do the city officials stand on this pricey, unprecedented stadium repair and utility increase? Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams. Next, we have Ms. Diane Howard from Ward 3. Diane is here going to talk about the Irish Town Ben Park. She is not representing anyone and not being paid by anyone.
Good evening to the councilmen and the councilwomen. I'm here on behalf of my community. I am a precinct committee person for Ward 3A. Also, I am a CMHA Commissioner. I'm here to speak on, "We need Irish Town Ben at Lakeview Terrance and Riverview." It's been—I've been living in CMHA for 26 years as a community leader. And we need where our residents in wheelchairs and children can go with their parents, maybe walk to the flats, walkway, trails. Because we've been blocked off for years. It's not like we was considered to be in Ohio City because we was living in public housing. So, but we do need Irish Ben. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Diane. Next, we have Mr. Gary Hanson. He is the, I believe, Acting President of University Circle, Inc. And he is —he's from Cleveland Heights. He is here to talk about the University Circle Special Improvement District. And he's representing UCI, but he is not being paid by anyone. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of City Council. As the Council President said, I'm the interim President of University Circle, Inc. I'm here to speak to you about the establishment of a Special Improvement District in University Circle. I want to thank all of you on behalf of the residents and constituents of University Circle for considering legislation this evening. A University Circle CID would provide a dependable source of revenue to fund the UCI Police Department, whose services benefit property owners, residents, employees, students, patients, visitors within and surrounding the district. UCPD works closely and productively with the Cleveland Police Department and with our sister departments in the Circle to enhance safety and prevent crime. UCPD is committed to community service, to accountability, civilian oversight, and unbiased policing. With the successful establishment of a Special Improvement District, UCPD will have expanded capacity in areas like mental health crisis intervention and social worker corespondence. Mr. President, members of council, thank you for considering this legislation. Thank you to the members of your colleagues in administration who've done some heavy lifting in the past few weeks. We greatly value all of your advice as we plan this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And last but not least, we have my good friend Tom McNair from Ward 4 to talk about Waterfront Access Fund, Irish Town Ben. He represents Ohio City, but he is not being paid by anyone to comment. Mr. McNair?
Thank you, Council President, members of council. Good evening. My name is Tom McNair. I am here before you tonight, first and foremost, as a resident of Councilwoman Gray's Ward 4 in the Buckeye neighborhood where I'm proudly raising my family with my wife. And as many of you know, I spend my days on the west side of the city trying to make Ohio City a better neighborhood. And I think for all the headlines that you may read about places like Ohio City, I think it is important to remember that this is a neighborhood that still has a 39% poverty rate. It is a neighborhood that is proudly home to over 2,000 residents in public housing like Ms. Howard. And it's why we spend so much of our time at Ohio City Incorporated focusing on doing the work of equitable outcomes, whether that was starting Near West Recreation with the Youth Sports League for over 1,300 kids across the Near West Side, 54% of which live below the poverty line, or our workaround affordable housing with the creation of the Near West Land Trust. But tonight, I stand before you representing over 20 different civic, nonprofit, and governmental, and private partners, including our friends Greg Peckham from Land Studio who's here, Whitney Long Jones, our Director of Community Engagement, and Ms. Howard, who is a member of our Committee of Champions. And I wanted to say thank you. And I wanted to say thank you for—to the administration and the council for your consideration of the ARPA Waterfront Fund, and specifically for your potential allocation for the Irish Town Ben Stabilization and Park Project. Now, as it states, it is first and foremost a stabilization project because the Cuyahoga River represents a $4.7 billion economic output for our region, right? But it is also an opportunity. It is an opportunity to connect our neighborhoods to the waterfront and to the city and the region and beyond, right? And so, Ohio City, we always joke in our office, is the waterfront neighborhood that can neither see nor touch the water. And we are working to change that every single day, right? And so, this is why we have spent so much of our time trying to make sure that we are doing that right, working with our residents in CMHA to be intimately involved in the planning of Irish Town Ben Park, because ultimately, we know that this park will be nationally significant. It will be a citywide and regional amenity, but it will be a new backyard for Ms. Howard and the residents in Lakeview Estates and Riverview Tower. So, again, I just wanted to say thank you as you create this ARPA Waterfront Fund and having a fund that focuses not just on things like downtown lakefront access, but things that really focus on that neighborhood waterfront amenities too, whether it is the Cheers Project, or Euclid Beach Park, or Irish Town Ben Park. So, thank you guys all very much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Mr. Clerk, please move to Communications.
File number 634—file number 634-2023 from Council President Blaine A. Griffin, designating without objection Cleveland City Council Alan Dryer to serve as Clerk of Council pro tempore for the council meeting on May 15, 2023, and for all matters requiring the clerk's signature, May 15 to 19, 2023. Re-received. From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, file number 600-2023, transfer ownership application for Parkwood Drive through LLC 1100 3 Superior Avenue in Ward 9. File number 601-2023, a new license application for the FIA Group LLC at 2053 East 55th Street in Ward 10. File number 602-2023, a stock application for WW152, Inc. at 1010 East 152nd Street in Ward 10. File number 603-2023, transfer of ownership application for Apple TRS Cleveland 7138 LLC at 2021 Cornell Road in Ward 6. File number 604-2023, a new license application for Apple TRS Cleveland 7138 LLC at 2021 Cornell Road in Ward 6. File number 605-2023, transfer of ownership for Red Lantern at CAMHS, Inc. at 17446 Loraine Avenue in Ward 17. File number 606-2023, a new license application for Mira Cleveland LLC at 5300 Riverside Drive, Ward 17. And file number 607-2023, a new license application at No Drama Enterprise LLC, 8214 Cedar Avenue in Ward 6.
Are there any condolence resolutions?
For Councilmember Griffin, Resolution Number 635-2023 for Samuel James Randall, Jr. For Councilmember Jones, Resolution Number 636-2023 for Myrtle E. Mel. For Councilmember Jones, Resolution Number 637-2023 for Marilyn L. Cargile.
Are there any other condolence resolutions? Seeing no other resolutions, will council members please rise for a moment of silence? Thank you. Are there any congratulatory resolutions?
For Councilmember Griffin, Resolution Number 638-2023 for Earl B. Turner. For Councilmember McCormick, Resolution Number 639-2023 for Father Michael Grunick. Resolution of commemoration for Councilmember Casey. Resolution Number 640-2023 for Cheryl and Suguru.
We don't have any presentations. I'll move to first. Reading emergency ordinances referred for administrative review and committee review.
Ordinance Number 608-2023 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance to amend Sections 1 and 5 of Ordinance Number 759, that dash 2022, passed September 19, 2022, relating to authorizing the purchase by one or more standard and requirement contracts for the purchase, lease, or lease with option to purchase of various on-road vehicles, apparatus, and off-road equipment, cabs, bodies, and accessories, equipment and other aftermarket items for the Department of Public Utilities and Port Control. Ordinance Number 609-2023 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance to amend Section 1 of Ordinance Number 761-2022, passed September 19, 2022, as amended by Ordinance Numbers 373-2023, passed March 20, 2023, relating to authorizing the purchase by one or more standard and requirement contracts for the purchase, lease, or lease with option to purchase of various on-road vehicles, apparatus, and off-road equipment, cabs, bodies, and accessories, equipment, and other aftermarket items. Ordinance Number 610-2023 by Councilmember Casey. An emergency ordinance to supplement the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, by amending Section 505.14, as amended by Ordinance Number 277-05, passed March 28, 2005, relating to the 50/50 hazardous sidewalk repair program. Ordinance Number 611-2023 by Councilmember Conwell. An emergency ordinance to add the name of Superintendent Walter J. Clark, Sr. Way as a secondary and honorary name to East 120th Street between Ashbury Road and Wade Park Avenue. Ordinance Number 612-2023 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance to make additional appropriations of $121,765,000 to the general fund and to transfer such amount to the strategic priority sub-fund. Ordinance Number 618-2023 by Councilmembers Hairston and Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Finance on behalf of the Office of Sustainability to apply for and accept a grant from the United States Environmental Protection Agency for the Climate Pollution Reduction Grants Programs, Formula Grants for Planning, and to enter into various contracts to implement this ordinance. Ordinance Number 619-2023 by Councilmembers House, Bishop, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the Director of Capital Projects to apply to the District One Public Works Integrating Committee for state funding for the rehabilitation of a portion of Payne Avenue to apply for and accept gifts and grants from various entities for the improvement, authorizing Director of Capital Projects to enter into agreements to design and construct the improvement, and other agreements needed to implement the improvement, and authorizing the Commissioner of Purchases and Supplies to acquire, accept, and record for right-of-way purposes, real property, and easements necessary to make the improvement. Ordinance Number 620-2023 by Councilmembers Bishop, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Capital Projects to apply to the District One Public Works Integrating Committee for state funding for the rehabilitation of a portion of Carnegie Avenue to apply for and accept gifts and grants from various entities for the improvement, authorizing Director of Capital Projects to enter into agreements to design and construct the improvement, and other agreements needed to implement the improvement, and authorizing the Commissioner of Purchases and Supplies to acquire, accept, and record for right-of-way purposes, real property, and easements necessary to make the improvement.
First reading, emergency ordinances to be passed.
Not—nothing yet.
Nothing?
Ordinance Number 621-2023 by Councilmembers McCormick and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Port Control to enter into one or more requirement contracts by tal competitive bidding with Wadsworth and Associates, Inc. for various proprietary services of labor materials needed for the installation and enhancement of security cameras and emergency stations and parking areas at Cleveland-Hopkins International Airport for the Department of Port Control for a period of two years with three one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Port Control. Ordinance Number 622-2023 by Councilmembers Bishop and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance determining method of making the public improvement for constructing, rehabilitating, renovating, replacing, or otherwise improving public facilities, buildings, and other similar structures, including site improvements and appurtenances, and authorizing Director of Public Works or Capital Projects as appropriate to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement, enter into one or more professional services and other contracts needed to implement the improvement, to apply for and accept grants and gifts, and authorizing the direct employment of necessary labor for the Department of Public Works and Office of Capital Projects. Ordinance Number—Ordinance Number 623-2023 by Councilmember Starr. An emergency ordinance rescinding the designation of the former Cuyahoga County Juvenile Court Building as a Cleveland landmark. Ordinance Number 624-2023 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $7 million for the purpose of providing funds to acquire vehicles and equipment for performing functions of the city's departments, including the Department of Public Works and Department of Public Safety, and authorizing related matters. Ordinance Number 625-2023 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $11 million for the purpose of providing funds to improve municipal parks and recreation facilities and authorizing related matters. Ordinance Number 626-2023 by Council member Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $15 million for the purpose of providing funds to improve buildings and structures, and providing for the discharge of governmental functions and services otherwise benefiting the public safety, health, and welfare, and for the provision of ancillary fixtures, furnishings, equipment, technology, and appurtenances, utilities, and site improvements for the purpose, and authorizing related matters. Ord— Ordinance Number 627-2023 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bombs of—of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $21 million for the purpose of providing funds to improve the municipal street system and related facilities, and authorizing related manners. Ordinance Number 628-2023 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $13 million for the purpose of providing funds to acquire heavy-duty trucks and equipment for performing functions of the city's Department of Public Works and Department of Public Safety, including Division of Fire, and authorizing related manners. Ordinance Number 629-2023 by Councilmembers Conwell and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing Director of Public Health to enter into an amendment to contract number PS 2023-116 with Ronald K. White, DBA, the Transparency Program, Inc., to continue to provide fatherhood services to participants in the Moms First Program. Ordinance Number 630-2023 by Councilmembers Sly and Mayor Bibb. An emergency ordinance to supplement the codified ordinance of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, by enacting new Section 171.68 relating to paid parental leave. Ordinance Number 631-2023 by Councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance authorizing the city of Cleveland to participate in the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council Electric Aggregation Program to serve residential and small commercial customers for a period of one year with—the August 2023 meter read cycle, and with two one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Finance and/or Public Utilities.
All right. First reading, emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance Number 613 by— Ordinance Number 613-2023 by Councilmember Spencer. An emergency ordinance authorizing Director of the City Plan Commission to enter into an agreement with Northwest Neighborhoods Community Development Corporation for the RTA Bus Shelter Project through the use of Ward 15 casino revenue funds.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Councilmember Sly that the rules be suspended and that legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Moore.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. 15—14 yeas.
Call to roll on passage.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. 14 yeas.
Thank you. First reading, ordinance referred for administrative review and committee review.
Ordinance Number 617-2023 by Councilmember Starr. An ordinance removing the existing 43-foot specific map setback from the street centerline on the north and south side of Broadway Avenue between Gallup Avenue and East 55th Street. Map changed—map changed 2669.
Thank you. First reading, emergency resolutions referred for administrative review and committee review.
Resolution Number 614-2023 by Councilmember Griffin by departmental request. An emergency resolution to adopt and declare a tax budget for the city of Cleveland for the year 2024 and submit it to the County Budget Commission as required by state law, chapter 5705 of the Revised Code. Resolution Number 615-2023 by Councilmembers Spencer, Bishop, and Hairston by departmental request. An emergency resolution declaring the intent to vacate a portion of the unnamed alley south of Train Avenue between West 56th Street and Canter Avenue. Resolution Number 616-2023 by Mayor Bibb. An emergency resolution declaring this council's desire that Cleveland and Nova Sad, Serbia, establish a sister-city relationship and authorizing the mayor to enter into such agreement and execute such documents that are necessary to implement the relationship. Resolution Number 632-2023 by Councilmembers McCormick, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency resolution approving the creation of a new Special Improvement District in the city by University Circle Incorporated as an existing qualified nonprofit corporation, approving the amendment to the Articles of Corporation by University Circle Incorporated, creating the Special Improvement District, accepting petitions from owners of property in the proposed—in the proposed district, accepting the initial comprehensive services and assessments planned for the new district, declaring it necessary to provide police and safety services, providing for an assessment for the cost of such services upon benefited property in the district, and declaring an emergency.
First reading, emergency resolutions to be adopted.
Resolution Number 633-2023 by Councilmember Griffin. An emergency resolution objecting to a new D3 liquor permit at 8214 Cedar Avenue.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
That the reading of the minutes—the—uh, motion by Councilmember Sly that the rules be suspended and that legislation just read be placed on final passage, seconded by Councilmember Moore.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. 15 yeas.
Call to roll on adoption.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palensik, Santana, Sly, Spencer, Starr. 15 yeas. Fifteen yeas.
Second reading, emergency ordinances to be passed.
Ordinance number eleven seventy three dash twenty twenty two by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing director of public utilities to enter into one or more contracts with CHN Housing Partners for professional services necessary to provide administration and other related services for the Division of Water's Discount Affordability Program for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew exercisable by the Director of Public Utilities. Ordinance number two nine four dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance to supplement the codified ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, nineteen seventy six by enacting new section one two nine point two three one relating to the purchase of food and beverages for the Department of Public Utilities. Ordinance number three two nine dash twenty twenty three as amended by councilmembers Bishop, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of public works to enter into one or more amendments to the lakefront parks lease with the Board of Park Commissioners for the Cleveland Metropolitan Park District to modify the boundaries of certain properties in the leased premises. Ordinance number three three five dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Palens, by councilmembers Bishop, Palensik, and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the directors of Public Works and Public Safety to enter into a license agreement granting air products and chemicals to use and occupy an an access road in two separate areas located on city-owned property adjacent to the former Kennel Building by Clark Field. Ordinance number four two six dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance to amend section two of ordinance number ten sixty-six dash twenty twenty-two passed November twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two relating to authorizing one or more requirement contracts of specialized and critical equipment, supplies, tools, software, computer equipment, training, and labor to maintain and replace components of various control systems, and authorizing one or more requirement contracts without competitive bidding for proprietary systems. Ordinance number four three one dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of constructing improvements at the Pleasant Valley Road Pumping Station and authorizing director of public utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement. Ordinance number four three five dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing purchase by one or more requirement contracts of rigging services for the Division of Cleveland Public Power Department of Public Utilities for the period of two years. Ordinance number four three six dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing purchase by one or more requirement contracts of labor and materials to evaluate, test, maintain, repair, or replace substation equipment, including but not limited to transformers, switch gears, circuit breakers, batteries, and fiber optics splicing and training if necessary for the Division of Cleveland Public Power Department of Public Utilities for a period of two years. Ordinance number four three seven is amended by department, by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of labor, materials, and equipment necessary to perform tree trimming, tree trimming services for the Division of Cleveland Public Power Department of Public Utilities for a period of two years. Ordinance number four four nine dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement for repairing, renewing, and or replacing transmission water mains, valves, and appurtenances for various projects and related site improvements, authorizing the director of public utilities to enter into one or more public improvement contracts for the making of the improvement and to apply and accept additional funding to implement this ordinance. Ordinance number four seven two dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts for the purchase of services and materials necessary to maintain and repair pumps, electric motors, controls, and appurtenances, including but not limited to inspection, supplies, repairing, and testing if necessary for the Division of Water Department of Public Utilities for a period of up to two years. Ordinance number four seven three dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing director of public utilities to enter into one or more requirement contracts for landscape materials, equipment, supplies, and services needed for testing, maintaining, installing, repairing, and replacing landscaping at city-owned or leased public utilities facilities and city right-of-ways for the divisions of Water, Water Pollution Patrol, Cleveland Public Power, and the Office of Radio Communications Department of Public Utilities for a period of two years. Ordinance number four seven five dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. Emergency ordinance authorizing the purchase by one or more requirement contracts of valves, actuators, and appurtenances, and labor materials needed to repair, replace, maintain, exercise, and test existing valves, valve actuators, and valve appurtenances, and to provide related services for the Division of Water Department of Public Utilities for a period of two years. Ordinance number four seven six dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing director of public utilities to enter into a utilities repair agreement with the County of Cuyahoga to pay or reimburse directly related costs incurred by the county for the repair of storm and sanitary sewer lines on an as-needed basis for a period of two years with one option to renew for an additional one-year period exercisable by the Director of Public Utilities. Ordinance number four eight four dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing director of public utilities to employ one or more professional consultants to administer, implement, and manage the Department of Public Utilities Youth Employment Program and and authorizing one or more contracts with public entities, individuals, or communities for purposes of of implementing the program for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew exercisable by the by the Director of Public Utilities, and authorizing the director to apply for and accept any gifts, grants, or services from any public or private entity. Ordinance number four eight six is amended by councilmembers Palensik and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the director of finance to enter into a donor-advised agreement with the Cleveland Foundation to establish, manage, and implement a City of Cleveland Neighborhood Safety Fund to provide grants for programs, interventions, and initiatives serving Cleveland residents that address the root causes of and effects from violence. Ordinance number five oh five dash twenty twenty three by councilmembers McCormick, Hairston, Bishop, and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance to amend sections one, two, and three of ordinance number nine nine five dash twenty twenty-one passed November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one relating to granting to the Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District certain eastman's right, certain eastman's rights at or under several city properties near South Marginal Road for, uh, the Sewer District Shoreline Cons, Shoreline Consolidation Sewer Project. Ordinance number five oh nine dash twenty twenty-three by councilmembers Casey and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing director of public utilities to enter into one or more requirement contracts without competitive bidding by Johnson Controls Fire and Protection LP for inspection, testing, and service of proprietary, of proprietary fire protection and life safety systems and replacement parts for the divisions of Water, Cleveland Public Power, and Water Pollution Patrol Department of Public Utilities for a period of up to two years with two one-year options to renew, the first of which requires additional legislative authority. Ordinance number five eleven dash twenty twenty-three by councilmembers Bishop and and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing director of public works to enter into an agreement with the Neighborhood Leadership Institute to to provide its schools as neighborhood resources, youth leadership Cleveland, and summer tennis programs at various, at various facilities throughout the city of Cleveland for a term of one year. Ordinance number five twenty dash twenty twenty-three by councilmembers Bishop, Hairston, and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing the directors of city planning and or public works as appropriate to enter into one or more agreements with the Convention and Visits Bureau of Greater Cleveland, Inc., DBA Destination Cleveland, for professional services for the design, programming, and project management of several exponential light installations on or benefiting city properties, and to accept the donation of any equipment, material, supplies, and services for lighting on such properties, authorizing other agreements, and authorizing the appropriate director to apply for and accept any gifts, grants, or services from any public or private entity. Ordinance number five two two dash twenty twenty-three by councilmembers Bishop and Hairston and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing director of city planning to employ one or more consultants to provide professional services for the design, programming, management, and or fabrication of interactive arts activities, sculptures, and or other amenities in downtown Cleveland, and to enter into other contracts, authorizing contracts to implement, and authorizing the director to apply for and accept any gifts, grants, or services from any pi, from from any public or private entity. Ordinance number five two eight dash twenty twenty-three by councilmembers Palensik, Bishop, and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing director of capital projects to enter into one or more contracts with the County of Cuyahoga to contribute funding for the construction of the Yucca Beach Trail Connector, and authorizing the director to apply for and accept any gifts, grants, or services from any public or private entity. Ordinance number five three two as amended, ordinance number five three two dash twenty twenty-three as amended by councilmembers McCormick, Bishop, and Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance determining the method of making the public improvement of constructing basement, roof, facade, HVAC, and electrical improvements to the West Side Market, authorizing director of capital improvements to enter into one or more contracts for the making of the improvement, and to apply for and accept any gifts, grants, or services from any public or private entity. Ordinance number five five one dash twenty twenty-three as amended by councilmember Griffin by departmental request. An emergency ordinance authorizing director of finance to apply for and accept a grant from the Refugee Response for the, for the Refugee Response Coordinator Program. Ordinance number five nine five dash twenty twenty-three as amended by councilmember Casey. The emergency ordinance directing a portion of the city's coronavirus local fiscal recovery fund payment to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts by providing assistance to impacted households, and authorizing the director of public facilities to establish a utilities amnesty program for eligible households in the city of Cleveland for an amount not, not, not to exceed two million dollars to be encumbered beginning March three, twenty twenty-one and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Read the motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by councilmember Slyf that the rules be suspended and the and the legislation just read be placed on final passage, section, seconded by councilmember Moore.
Call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palensik, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. Fifteen yeas.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, councilwoman, uh, House.
So I was trying to get your attention because I still, um, I would like to be li, listed as a, um, a sponsor on ordinance four eighty-six, twenty twenty-three, and ordinance five ninety-five, twenty twenty-three, as well as ordinance five eleven, twenty twenty-three.
Can you please make sure that the councilwoman is added to all of those? Do you need me to re, um, repeat it? Okay, thank you. Councilman Starr.
He didn't get it, I'm just kidding. Can you mark me as a no?
Five thirty-two?
Yes.
Please will mark councilman Starr as no, as five thirty-two. Councilwoman Spencer.
Thank you. Uh, please recuse me from three twenty-nine. Thank you.
Please recuse the councilwoman from three twenty-nine. Any other? All right, Mr. Clerk, call to roll.
Griffin, Bishop, Conwell, Gray, Hairston, Harsh, House, Jones, Casey, Kelly, Moore, McCormick, Palensik, Santana, Slyf, Spencer, Starr. On five thirty-two, there's fourteen yeas, one nay. On ordinance number three twenty-nine, there's, there's fourteen yeas, no nays, one recusal. On all the rest, there's fifteen yeas, no nays.
Call to roll on passage.
That was it.
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we have, uh, introductions, and I first want to acknowledge, if she could please stand, uh, where is the president for Ask Me, one Local one hundred, Bonnie Perry? There she is, Bonnie Perry. Let's give her a round of applause. I also would like, uh, Marquise Brown and all of the members of Ask Me that are here today, if they could please stand. Thank you all so much. We all appreciate the work that all of you do every day, um, as, um, loyal workers in the city of Cleveland, and is really glad that all of you are here to see the people's business. It just shows how much, um, of dedicated public servants you are. Uh, so thank you, this Cleveland City Council is here, uh, always here in support of you. Thank you. All right, uh, are there any other introductions? Councilman Kerry McCormick?
Um, I'd like to recognize our West Side Market vendors, as well as those that are here to support the West Side Market here tonight. Absolutely, from here with us. Thank you for taking your time out of your busy day running your small business to be with your, uh, here with us tonight. And then, of course, back for the second week in a row is the mayor of Treema, James Lamb. James, give us a wave.
Jimmy Lamb.
All right.
Richard Starr, councilman Richard Starr.
Hey, Council President, just want to give an acknowledgement out to Mr. Larry Wazo, who helped raise me in the rec center back in the day. He's here today, I want to make sure I acknowledge him. And, and I definitely will put out one last, um, um, introduction to my intern, Mr. Jad Ozzle, who will be interning with me for this whole entire summer. He's a senior at Case Western Reserve studying public, um, political science and economics. So Conwell, you don't know the only one about economics.
All right, seeing no other introductions, are there any announcements? Any announcements? Any announcements? Councilman Michael Palensik?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my honorable colleagues, acting clerk. Wednesday, one thirty, five five two legislation dealing with the programs, uh, violence prevention programs at our rec centers, two-point-six-million-dollar initiative. Please, all members of the safety committee be there one thirty on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any other announcements? Any other announcements? Uh, move to miscellaneous, is there any miscellaneous? Uh, councilman Charles Slyf? Councilman Charles Slyf?
All right, thank you, Mr. President, and and I rise tonight, uh, I've been working for a number of years on, uh, thinking through ways that we can support our workers here at the city of Cleveland, uh, the people who deliver the city's services, uh, the people that we rely on as city council, uh, to make sure that that, you know, our residents are getting everything out of this building that we want them to get. And and to that end, a focus of mine, even as as a former employee, you know, wearing that hat, has been, uh, thinking through ways that we need to bring this workplace kind of more into the modern era. And and, uh, with that, I've, I'm proud to introduce tonight alongside the administration a new, uh, paid parental leave policy in ordinance six thirty, uh, twenty-three. And what this does is it creates a, a twelve-week, uh, paid availability for city workers who have a baby, whose partner has a baby, or who adopts. Uh, it also, and I think this is great, it creates a twenty-hour set aside for, uh, workers so that prior to a child being born, uh, they can make sure that they have the time that they need to attend prenatal appointments. So why are we doing this? A couple of reasons. One is I, I genuinely believe that this is good for workers. If we want our city residents to get the city services that 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 they deserve, we need workers who are happy, who are taken care of, and who want to work for the city of Cleveland. And I think that anyone who's been in this building long enough knows, uh, that people will leave because they can find better pay somewhere else, they can find a workplace that provides, uh, it better benefits, or just better support for people facing the everyday things that we all face, raising kids, having a family, um, you know, having our own health, health issues. Um, so to me, this is about, uh, supporting our workers, it's about retaining the workers that we have. It is cheaper to retain our workers than to have to continually, uh, carry chronic positions and go through the cost of hiring, uh, for vacant positions. It also helps us attract, uh, we've talked about how there's nine individuals in the police academy right now, nine. Now, this isn't going to solve that in and of itself, but I do believe that by, you know, would you want to be a police officer if you were told that you couldn't take a vacation day for a year and you might be thinking about having a baby? That's not a workplace that's going to work for your life. Um, I s, I do think it's good for residents. It's good for residents when our employees are able to take care of their own needs so that they can come into the work of, or the office, or they can go to their, uh, wherever they report, and and have the energy and and the satisfaction of knowing that we're supporting them with their families. Um, I believe that this shows that we're living our values. We've all talked about the infant mortality rate in Cleveland. We have groups like Birthing Beautiful Communities that are working to serve especially women of color in our community, uh, in in perinatal care, and this demonstrates that we are living up to that value among our thousands of workers also. And and lastly, this isn't that expensive. It's, we're estimating it's about a one, one to two, one-point-two-million-dollar, uh, impact on a one-point-six-billion-dollar budget, and that's not even accounting for the cost savings down the road of retaining workers. Uh, so, uh, to you, uh, Council President, I, I thank you for, uh, your continued conversations as, as I've been, uh, working through this with, along with my colleagues and the mayor. Uh, I believe that we should be normalizing and supporting parenting, uh, as as one of our goals for our workplace, and I say that as a parent myself. We want our parents focused on childcare, not feeling pressure to come back into work, and certainly we don't want our workers exhausting their vacation at sick banks and or foregoing, you know, medical care themselves, uh, to the point where we incentivize them leaving our workplace and just compounding our difficulties in in being fully staffed. So this is not the end of all the work we need to do to support our workers, but I think by making a statement that we are going to offer our workers the same types of benefits you get for working in this, in the federal government, other large cities, growing in the private sector, I think that that helps us attract the workers we need to get the job done for our residents. So tha, thank you.
Thank you so much. And I want to say that Councilman Slyf is being very modest, but paid safe leave, uh, um, paid parental leave, a lot of those things that are dealing around, uh, parental rights and parental, um, needs, you've been really addressing. So glad that you've been able to do that, sir, and thank you for all your hard work on that. Uh, I want to acknowledge Councilman Brian Ca, oh, I'm sorry, Jenny Spencer, then Councilman Brian Casey.
Thanks, Council President. Uh, as I was at the table today watching how hard my colleagues were working, we had we had a municipal services committee meeting that started at nine o'clock, nine-thirty this morning, went till two-thirty this afternoon. Right into finance committee, we were there at the table till quarter of seven at night. I had an up-close-and-personal view of how hard you all advocate for your residents, for our constituents, how much love you bring for the city of Cleveland, and on the administration side as well, the folks on the other side of the table, all here to work on behalf of Clevelanders. Uh, and yet I rise tonight because our fate, the fate of our city and our residents is inextricably linked to what happens with the state of Ohio. And, uh, unfortunately, we are here, uh, this Monday night. When we were here together last Monday night, unfortunately, the world was a completely different place because last Wednesday, our hyper-partisan, gerrymandered state legislature, uh, chose to, uh, put forward an August eighth special election, which would enshrine minority rule in our state constitution. And this is, um, essentially, this is on the heels of, in, in January, that same body passing, approved by our governor, some of the most repressive voter suppression, uh, laws in the entire country. We have some of the strictest voter I D laws in the United States now. As of January of this year, Ohio has a much higher bar in order for our people to vote on the heels of that. And now they've come forward with an August special election, and the purpose of that is to make it harder for citizens to amend our state constitution. For the past one hundred and seventy-five years, the citizens of Ohio have been able to amend our constitution through ballot initiative with fifty percent plus one vote. Now, the August special election, which will come at a, at a cost of twenty million dollars, our state legislature is going to charge the vote, the taxpayers of Ohio, twenty million dollars to, to hold this, uh, this unjust special election with the sole purpose of making it harder for ballot initiatives to go forward. So, um, a lot of folks have been talking about this, that yes, this actually, if, if we don't vote no in August, you all need to remember, vote no in August. Vote no on August eighth. But if, if we don't vote no on August eighth, it is highly doubtful that even if we are able to get reproductive rights on the, on the ballot in November, it is highly doubtful that we will be able to meet that sixty percent threshold. Even more concerning than that, even more concerning, is this, this, it would be the permanent enshrining of minority rule in our state constitution, including we will have a gerrymandered state government that does not represent the will of the people for, for generations to come. Unfortunately, we have been called into the fight of our lives, and I, um, you know, I don't want to be hyperbolic here, but I think there's no other way to say that. You are part of my sphere of influence, and I am part of yours. And we need to start talking to everyone we know about this bizarre historical moment we're in at which the citizens of Ohio need to show up to a special election in August and vote no amidst a time when there has been voter purging and it's even harder to vote. So we need to, uh, get our people yes to the polls. We need to help make sure they have the correct state-issued photo I D to be able to vote. We need to help them, help them check and make sure they're registered. This is crazy town time, but we're here. So the last thing I will say is that, um, and we have less than ninety days, right, until this, this, uh, the fight of our lives here and for the state of, for, whether we will have democracy in Ohio or we won't. The last thing I'll say, I have ten seconds left, Mr. Council President, is there is a votenowinagust.org website, which has details about the work we must do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for bringing that up, Councilman Brian Casey, Councilman Brian Casey.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Um, tonight, I want to, after months and months of begging and pleading, um, energy aggregation for the city has been introduced, and I want to let the members of the Utilities Committee know that we'll be hearing it this Thursday. Um, so anybody who's interested in the energy aggregation, um, can please attend that meeting. Also, um, I want to thank my colleagues and yourself, Mr. President, because tonight we passed five ninety-five, twenty twenty-three, which was the utility amnesty, uh, legislation, which is what, uh, I believe ARPA funds were, were, were really used for because though we are going to help, uh, some of the most neediest, uh, who are facing challenging times in the city due to the, the COVID, uh, pandemic. So it's going to affect about twelve hundred CPP residents and about fourteen hundred our customer, our accounts, and then fourteen hundred water accounts as well. So I just want to thank my colleagues and yourself, and especially the, uh, the, um, the Director of Public Utilities who, who worked diligently to help come up with the, with the plan for doing it. But I also want to thank my colleagues in the administration for the support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Seeing no other miscellaneous, Mr. Clerk, please excuse the absences.
Motion by Councilmember Sly that the absences of Councilmembers Jones and Santana are hereby excused. Seconded by Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. Council is adjourned to the next regular meeting on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Thank you.